Hello, this is Lawrence A. Robinson with part two of this series concerning the Orange County School Board questionable decision to close Richmond Heights Elementary. In this part, we will listen to comments made by school board members and we will try to understand their reasoning for closing the school. There are many residents at the school board meeting on October 25, 2011. A few got up to speak. The first force that you will hear is school board chairman Bill Sablet. Then the residents who came up to speak will introduce themselves.
All right, board members. We've vetted this issue pretty thoroughly. We have a number of speakers. Let's go to them first unless you have any questions as staff. I'm going to go to the public speakers. And for those again sitting in our audience, I know the folks are here for this issue, but this is our second or third board meeting where we've talked about this issue. So it's been pretty well talked out. Our first speaker is Ms. Michelle Hopkins. Welcome. Ms. Hopkins, if I could, may I ask, let me ask you to state your name and address for the record and you have three minutes to address the board.
Okay, my name is Michelle Hopkins. I live at 603 Summit Point, Orlando, Florida, 32818.
My name is John Powell. I live at 4237 Tatum Street, Orlando, Florida, 32811. Okay, so that gives us about 500 signatures right now that they don't want to close the school.
Good evening. Chair, board members. My name is David Rucker. I am retired from Orange County School Board of 20 years. I am also a community activist and my kids also attended Richmond High School back in the 70s.
Good evening. I am James Q. Mitchell, Post Office Box 555003 in Orlando, Florida.
Okay, this is Lawrence A. Robinson again. In that section, you heard John Powell, who is the president of Richmond Heights PTA, say that they have collected over 500 petitions from the residents to keep the school open. Okay? Now you will hear each of the school board members give their statement for their decision to close the school or not to close the school. We're going to start with Chairman Bill Sablet.
Going to punch your buttons, members. If you want to speak on this issue, I've got myself and Ms. Flynn so far as the only two, so I'll eat off. I'm going to oppose this effort to close Richmond Heights and it's an issue I will share with you that I've really, really struggled with because I think there are some very good arguments for doing it and I just respect so highly the board member who has brought this issue to us. And I do want to say in her defense, I think there has been plenty of public meetings, plenty of notice by her to reach out to that community and hear from them. And I understand the argument that by closing this school and combining it with Eccleston, it will guarantee that this community gets a new school built. And I've struggled with that because I do recognize the reality that we're projected to get the school number 92 on the list and I think Richmond Heights is school number, don't quote me on this, but someone tells me it's like 113 or so. One what? 110 out of the 123-plus schools that we said we would renovate. So it is a bit of a gamble that the voters will re-up the half-cent sales tax for us to continue re-renovating schools. But at the end of the day, I am voting against this effort simply because I am almost a religious believer in neighborhood schools. And I also believe fervently that the higher the poverty level of the population going to a neighborhood school, the more likely that population will participate in a school's life that is located mile and a half, two miles, two and a half miles from their population base. I always point out to folks that when you close an upper-middle-class school, it's no big deal for those parents, many of whom are stay-at-home parents, to participate still in the life of a school because transportation is not an issue, access is not an issue. But when you close a high-poverty neighborhood school and you relocate that school some distance away, you might as well in many regards take away parental involvement from the new school. Because many of those parents are single-parent households, many of them are working two to three jobs to keep a roof over their head, food on the table. It's hard enough for them to participate in the life of a school only five or six blocks away. It's well-nigh impossible when that school, especially with the transportation issues higher-poverty populations have, when that school is a mile and a half, two miles away. It also pains me every time I drive through a high-poverty neighborhood to see so many of our higher-poverty children, and I know this is a vestige of discrimination in the DSEG order, but walking blocks and blocks and blocks and blocks through heavily urbanized, heavily trafficked roads to get to their schools. And you know, the zoning argument, I think, is a very persuasive argument. For what it's worth, I don't find it persuasive whatsoever, not even remotely persuasive, the argument that we need to close this school because it only has 300 students or 280 or whatever it is because we can't operate a small school efficiently. I think the answer is there to look at why this school only has 280 or 300 students and fix that issue whether through zoning, whether through better programs, whether through looking at our attendance levels at surrounding schools. So for that reason, and it's a tough decision, I've really struggled with it and even going into this meeting tonight, I wasn't sure exactly how I was going to vote on this issue. I frankly only made up my mind after weeks and weeks of deliberating on this issue. I only made up my mind myself on this issue literally about 5 o'clock today, right before we came into this meeting. And I just finally came to the conclusion that for me, this is just my opinion and I respect board members who don't agree with me on this, that at the end of the day, the best thing for the education of these children, in my opinion, and for parental involvement in this school, is to keep Richmond Heights open. So for that reason, I'll oppose the effort. Please, no, I'm sorry. I should have said this at the beginning, like zoning here, you can give us a thumbs up or a thumbs down if you'd like, but no clapping, even if you like what we say. But thank you.
Okay, this is Lawrence A. Robinson again. Okay, you just heard Bill Sablet opposing the closing of Richmond Heights Elementary School. He said he highly respected the board member who brought the issue to the board. I'm assuming he means Kent Gordon brought the issue to the board to close Richmond Heights. Mrs. Sablet also gave a very, very moving statement in favor of keeping the school open. Most of what he said was on point. It was absolutely great. It moved me. Okay, the next person, next board member is Ms. Flynn.
Ms. Flynn.
I actually want to ask you to allow Mr. Rodriguez to explain about the settlement committee because I think it is, would be informative for us all to know on this board, again, how they will function, how they have reviewed the information that is being presented tonight, and I think it's important for the community to know. If you'll agree to that request, I also am not going to comment yet because I want to hear from Mrs. Gordon, but I think at some point, we have to look at these small schools. I think at some point, it's going to catch up to us. You know, they're not able to offer everything that another school with higher numbers because of the funding and funding's not going to get any easier for us. So I think we have to be prepared for it at some point. But right now, I'd like for Mr. Rodriguez to explain about the settlement committee and then I wish to hear from Mrs. Gordon.
Mr. Rodriguez.
Okay, this is Lawrence Robinson again. Mrs. Flynn asked for an explanation about the settlement committee. She wanted this school board's attorney, Mr. Rodriguez, to explain what the settlement committee was all about. Well, there is no settlement committee. There is a settlement agreement. Clearly, the board members don't understand what they're voting on. Mrs. Flynn won't vote until she hears from Mrs. Gordon. Okay, Mr. Rodriguez talked for a few minutes but didn't answer the question. Well, he couldn't answer the question because there is no such thing as a settlement committee. But he talked for a few minutes. He made some general statements that actually meant nothing. Since Mrs. Flynn thought that there was a settlement committee, she would have accepted any answer at all and she did. Okay, next you will hear from Ms. Bell.
All right, thank you. Ms. Bell.
Okay, I didn't want to get Mrs. Gordon mad at me, but I'm from a small school and I know a teacher out at Richmond Heights and she talks glowingly about Richmond Heights and how being a small school, they have a very close relationship and they're able to reach students that probably wouldn't otherwise be able to be reached because they have this close-knit group. The community is close-knit. And it's like, like I said, she talks glowingly of Richmond Heights. It's like the building doesn't matter. It's the people there. It's the students there. It's the sense of community that she feels is there. And she feels that the students that come there need that extra attention and they need that small building, that small space. And coming from a small school, we might not have had what everyone else had. For example, we didn't have football because we didn't have enough people to play football. We had basketball, but what we did have, everyone got to be in. I mean, that's kind of a difference, a trade-off. A lot of times in large schools, yeah, you'll have more activities, but you also have more competition. Another thing is everyone that's come up here spoke for keeping Richmond Heights and to me, that's important. You know, if you've bothered to come out in favor of Richmond Heights, then it's really important to you. I didn't hear anyone say they wanted it tore down. And then to have petitions, 500 people sign a petition, that means a lot. That's a lot of effort. That's something else here, but I can't read it. So I have to say that I'm in favor of keeping Richmond Heights as well. I think that a community does not need to be broken up anymore. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bell.
Okay, this is Lawrence Robinson again. The first thing that Mrs. Bell said was that she didn't want to get Mrs. Gordon mad with her. It is looking more and more like Mrs. Gordon is running this entire circus. Mrs. Bell gave a very moving statement in favor of keeping the school open. Okay, next you'll hear from Mrs. Moore.
Ms. Moore.
I just wanted to say, I think that all the reasons that Ms. Bell and Mr. Sablet that you gave for keeping small schools open is absolutely true and I don't think any of us would be here with this proposal if things were as they were four or five years ago, we weren't in a recession and we weren't having to fend off charter schools from taking our capital money and everything else that we're having to deal with. I think Mrs. Gordon, this issue was born out of her concern for the students at Richmond and the students in this community and how do we preserve their education going in the future with fewer capital dollars, with fewer operational dollars. So as I had mentioned before, I don't think this has to be a complete death knell for this school. I think it's trying to keep them alive with a quality program in the near future and we certainly can do research and look at redistricting and rezoning going in the future and, you know, if the money is renewed with the sales tax and we keep our money. It's not saying that that still couldn't be rebuilt down the road, but it's the issue of we need to give all these children with a first-class prototype school and have the full complement of art and music teachers. And so I'm glad they're here defending their school. They love their school and I think that's important. But to me, this vote is about preserving the community, preserving everything that they have in the best way that we can, given the circumstances that we've been dealt with from the state. And I know it's hard because they don't have all that information and none of us have a crystal ball, but certainly, we're not going into the future with more money. We're going into the future with less money. And I would want to be sure that the community gets two prototype schools right now while we have the money and we could give them the very best that we have, even though this isn't the best of what I would wish. I would wish for them to have all the full complement of teachers and keep these schools at 200, but it's just not the area that we're in. And so it's not my best, but maybe it's the second-best that we can do for everyone in the community.
Thank you, Ms. Moore.
Mrs. Moore opposes keeping the school open. She gave a very moving statement in support of Mrs. Gordon. Her information had little to do with reality, but it sounded really good. Okay, next is Mr. Roach.
Mr. Roach.
This issue separates itself out from so many others that I make decisions on. But I'll tell you the principles for me personally in this one, and that is, I've been the kind of board member in my community where there are times when I feel like my community wants me to lead and they're willing to sit back, let me make the decisions. And then there's times when the community rises up and they really want me to speak for them. And that's really the role I've always seen myself as, is that the community, I'm there because of the community. They're my boss and when they speak loudly, I listen to them. There's very few times I've gone against them. In the closing of Kaylee, many of us in the board have been there, and the closing of Pine Castle, I think we've been, those of you know that we went through some really stressful times. But I told everybody that it wasn't stressful for me because my community was so vocal, they wanted to keep their schools, even though we were promising them bells and whistles on brand-new schools just two or three miles away to merge. They wanted no part of it. And I learned a valuable lesson there. People love their community and they want, they're willing to have an older building to keep it there. And here's the thing, November 2002, I'll be your historian as long as I can, that was a really, really great night. First of all, to be selfish, I got re-elected that night and I was happy. But the big thing for this community that night is we passed for the first time in nine tries, a half-penny sales tax for schools. We were broke as a school board. We didn't have a pot to pee in and we went to the community and we said, would you help us? And if you will help us, we'll post a list of the schools in the order that we will rebuild them or redesign them or tear them down and build a brand-new school. We gave a list and theirs really is the, that's the stamp on the whole thing. We told Richmond Heights we'd build them a new school if they'd pass this half penny. We didn't say, and we better think about this in 2014, we didn't say if you'll pass it, we'll build you a school maybe, depending on the economic conditions at the time when your number rolls up. We didn't say that. And if we don't say that in 2014, I don't feel like we can go back and close a school if the community doesn't want it. Now, I was prepared tonight to go along with Mrs. Gordon's proposal, so long as the community came forward and said, we want the newer schools and we're willing to move. But it'd been an absolute no-brainer. But that community, to me, we've got to keep our promise. I don't see, I don't see really that our promise is worth much as we do, but I do understand, many of us think we can offer the kids a better product. But these people's hearts are in that school community and you can't trump a heart over the bells and whistles. It ain't going to work. So I'm going to, I'm going to stick with the community and stick with the list, your 110 on the list and it'll come up sooner or later. In the meantime, you know, you got a good school over there.
Thank you, Mr. Roach.
Okay, this is Lawrence Robinson again. Okay, Mr. Roach gave a very, very moving, very, very powerful statement in favor of keeping the school open. He said a lot of factual things that really, really should be taken note of. Okay, next is Mrs. Gordon. Mrs. Gordon talked for about 12 minutes, which is nine minutes longer than her given time. In those 12 minutes, she didn't say much of anything worthwhile. She just rambled on and on. She mentioned her fighting for Evans. She mentioned her fighting for Oak Ridge. She agreed that the board promised to build, but then said, when it comes to District 5, it is never time to do it. She said that until she get our fair share, she will fight till the end, but yet she voted to close the school. I really couldn't follow the rest of what she said and will not try to translate. Just listen for yourself.
Mrs. Gordon.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I beg to differ with Mr. Roach. If you go to the schools in Mr. Roach's district, you know, I had Pine Castle for years and years and years and I think I've become very, very close to the Pine Castle family and they know that they would fight, I would fight extremely hard for them as any school on this board. And I think everybody on this board knows that I have been the advocate for the Evans High and that is why we have a new facility. And the board agreed that they see what I saw and we did what we had to do to get Evans to where it is today. I think this board also saw my effort and my fight for Oak Ridge High, that we also attained the same type of facility that you have. Yes, Mr. Roach, we promised them that we would build, but it always appeared that every time it comes to the schools in District 5, we never appears to get everything that we want. Now we finally have a board that stepped forward and say, hey, it's time for us to do it. I doubt again, I don't know if they may ever pass a sale tax when we put $500,000 in artificial turf and other things and provide transportation for the rich and the famous and not provide it for Ivy Land and Fern Creek and Union Park and those schools. Until we get our fair share, I will fight till the end, our fair share. This board knows that it is a fair share. I appreciate my colleagues in stating what they are saying. We promised, Mr. Roach, we just did not promise that we would build. We promised we would build facilities that would be a facility that we could be proud of. We have moved many schools in this district. We moved Jones many times before we were able to get what we have now and that was still not my heart desire, but we got what we did because a group in the community saw fit. 500 is one thing and a lot of people called me about the signatures and the NAACP, the local NAACP, voted in their executive board to support. The Eccleston family in which we had this meeting voted to support. The Richmond Heights family were a little skeptical because they did not know, but they knew that they wanted something different that night when we had our meeting when Mr. Powles was there. I do not know what it is that they did not understand, but the point that I really want to make is when we're not going to continue to settle for second-hand schools. We've been handed that all of our life. When I came here in the 60s, we moved Catalina was all white. The white, everybody moved out and then we ended up with Catalina. Memorial was all white. We ended up with that facility. Grand Avenue was all white. We ended up with that facility. And when I say we, I'm talking preferably Hispanic and African-American and Haitian right now and Jamaicans. Evans was all white. Pine Hills was all white. Pine Castle was all white. Rock Lake was all white. Grand Avenue was all white. How long do you think that I will sit here as an African-American on this board and be satisfied with second-best? No, we have an opportunity now to move forward. We have an opportunity. Some of the people in my community has never gone on the east side to see what it looks like and what those schools look like. How could, what is it that I failed to do when we had our meeting to let you know that the library that you have is what we put there when I came on this board? You didn't even have a library. The previous board had closed your library. I'm a professional librarian. Your books were molded. It was a disgust. And then you think that I'm going to settle for what we put there? No way. I could never settle for it because I've been elsewhere, I see what it looks like and I know that we could do better. The two schools are better together because of the growth. We do not have growth. I don't know who in the street committee is giving the information and I'm so sorry that they didn't come to the October 10th meeting because it was broadcast. And I'm going to ask the chairman to extend my hours, my minutes, some kind of way, put me back on the speaking order and let me hear my other colleagues. But the two schools and my community, according to those people that asked me to speak for them and voted me in, okay, has come to me and said, when are we going to, if we stay the way we are, what are our potentials? Yes, the small schools are good, but we got the class-size amendment right now. The class-size amendment will have to be followed and this board is seeing to it that Superintendent Black is following it. I can get back on the speaking order?
Well, I think the will of the board is to let you continue. How much, go ahead and finish, Mrs. Gordon.
Not much longer. So, okay, so the two schools, I feel, because I've watched the working of this board, I have to strike when the fire is hot and the iron is burning because this board is ready to move. You have Christine and Apopka, the Apopka people have called and said, Ms. Gordon, we are willing to pull back one of our schools. When has that ever been done? Never. It's not about the facility. Yes, it is about it because why would we settle for second-best? The main thing is that it's not about large. It's because of the economy. Look at what is happening in the presidency right now. We don't know where we're going and the area that will be hit will be mine. You know why? Because everybody else's area is growing and leaps and bounds and it'll be just like the sale tax. We were on the top of the list, but we ended at the bottom. Why? Because this board and we saw fit that, my God, if we had not built, in Ms. Flynn's district, it would have been a mess out there because this board is going to have to do what it has to do. Now is the time for us to be able to get our economy and our scale up together. The economy is better not now because it is in a terrible fix. We don't know where it's going. One larger school and two small school, I would rather fight. And Mr. Powles, you are absolutely right and you were almost for it. I would rather have two good schools in my hand than waiting on three. If I wait, my fifth graders are right now in 2011. They will graduate from elementary or promoted in 2012. They're already gone. So when they get, when they get ready to build Richmond Heights in 2019, they will already have graduated from high school. My fourth graders would be in 11th grade. My third graders will be in 10th grade. My second graders will be in 9th grade and my first graders will be in 7th grade. So your kids won't even be at the school when they get ready to build it. How long do you want to stay in a building that's already 47 years old when everybody else have fabulous buildings? That is not Mont Blanc. That is not the best. The dollars saved in the merger will be reinvested to provide the extra help it will need to be an A school. Mr. Roach, you said it is a good school. We are struggling at Richmond Heights. We fought, this present board with many members on it fought. In 2007, we received a grade of F. In 2008, the grade of B. In 2009, we chaired for A because that's when all of my schools, 11 of them, received an A. Oh, but we ended up in another roller coaster. We had C, D. Why? Because of staff. When you have no students, you have no staff. When you have no students, you have no programs. Christine told you about the music and art. So guess what? We need to be an A school again and all of our schools like we were before. But because of declining enrollment and there's no growth and that figure you're talking about, I think it's 310, but we're talking about a five-year projection. The five-year projection is 277. You know that community just as well as I do. I've been there 47 years. That means our reading, math, our science coaches, we can get. This board has already said, we ask, if we do it, if you don't, hey, we will lose out. If we do, we will be bigger and stronger. We will have our art and music and library programs. We will have our extra math coaches with the money that we would have saved that we would normally have. Yes, rezoning, I can ask that Blank and the kids move over to Grand Avenue. I can ask that Boone kids go to Jones, but are they going to do it? We did it before and they didn't go. So why are we going to make them go? We have these students, there is no transportation problem. Everybody, there is no busing problem, Mr. James Q. Mitchell, who served on the committee before, when we redrew the lines, okay, with the rezoning. There's no busing, okay? That's going to be a problem there. So my point is that I've got to say, it is better as a sitting board member for you. I know the unitary status. I know this stuff inside out. It's better to give these kids a modern, up-to-date facilities with the best of teachers. It's better to give these kids a modern, up-to-date facilities with the best of teachers. Yes, you have some of the best because we've seen to put the best, but you will have more of the best. And we're doing good to probably just hold on to that. So, I, I am recommending, the board is not, we're not gonna sell anything to First Baptist. First Baptists don't even know what we're doing, just like you didn't know. Um, um, Michelle Hopkins, you didn't know. First Baptists don't even know, unless y'all went over there and told them, the street committee, okay? I, I suggested to the board that we take Dr. Lawson's office and move it there, okay? I suggested we offer to the graveyard. We're burying people on top of each other. We don't even have a facility out there. Nobody has talked about what we could do with it. That would be a community project. It could be a community school, but a great idea came up, the NAACP asked for it if we did decide to do it, which is something, another point. So, Mr. Chairman, I love my community. They know it. They know I'm a fighter. They know that I'm gonna do the right thing. They know that nobody's gonna throw nothing past me. And I'm asking this board to consider tonight that we no longer hold up Eccleston. We're going to build Eccleston anyhow. We are going to build Washington Shores anyhow. Why leave Richmond Heights out when we can all come together and have the best facility now than to begin construction when these kids are already in high school? So, I thank you, Ms., uh, fellow board members. I thank you, Mr. Chairman. You all got it in your community. I want it in mine. I want the best. We have the property. We are ready to go, and I'm ready to move, and that is a legacy that I would like to leave, that we did something to keep our kids together. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gordon.
Okay, that was, uh, Mrs. Gordon finishing up her, her statements there, 12 minutes worth. Next is Mrs. Robinson. Next is Mrs. Robinson. Now, Mrs. Robinson asked about island zones. Chairman Sablet asked Ms. Simpson, who's a staff member, to come up and explain island zones. Mrs. Simpson said that there are island zones that are close to Eccleston and Richmond Heights Elementary, and they call it the Palm Lake and Pershing Island Zones. And those are students that are, that go predominantly to white schools. Now, this island zone is close to Richmond Heights and Eccleston, but there are 100 students in that island zone that are bused away from Richmond Heights and Eccleston, out of the area to probably 10 miles away to Pershing. Mrs. Robinson said she struggled with the issue, but because Richmond Heights is a small school, she voted, uh, along with Cat Gordon. The problem here is Richmond Heights is about 30% short of capacity. Those 100 students will build it up to close to capacity. It will not be a small school anymore, just by putting tho- those island zone students into Richmond Heights. Okay? Let's listen.
Mrs. Robinson.
I have a question, and I'm hoping, Ms. Simpson, can I, can I address a question to Ms. Simpson?
Yeah.
I've asked you about island zones before. Is there any way you could pull up some island zone? How many are being pulled from Richmond Heights right now and sent to, do you know an answer to that?
Lieutenant Jenkins, can we have Ms. Simpson come up and take a stab at that?
Yes, thank you.
Ms. Simpson? Just making sure you're awake.
Sorry to catch you off guard with that. Yeah, I was just making sure you're awake out there.
Yes. The, uh, the island zones that are close to Eccleston and Richmond Heights, I believe, are the Palm Lake and, and the Pershing. And right now, none of those kids go to Richmond Heights. If, if we were to review, looking at the elimination of island zones, we would look at the surrounding schools. I, I have looked at those numbers. I don't have that with me, but in most cases, they're under 100 students in each of the islands.
So, you're saying no students, there are no island zones pulling from Richmond Heights at this present moment? Is that what I just?
No, Richmond Heights, no. The, the Ivy, there's a Wendy Ridge, all the island zones are basically going to predominantly white schools.
Right. I understand that the concept of island zones, I'm asking if we did away with island zones, how many of those island zones are in the Richmond Heights?
Well, there's one that's contiguous to it. It's not actually.
There's one, oh, it's not actually in, I, I get what you're saying. So, when they were established, but they're close to?
There's one close to Eccleston or Richmond Heights, yes.
But that, that's the only one?
Right. And then, I don't.
And how many students did you guesstimate that is?
There's, when we look, there's not much, many, more than around 100, but I could certainly pull that information, walk over to the office and get it. I just didn't bring that with me.
Okay. I wish I'd thought of asking you that sooner. Thank you. Um, I struggle with this issue. I am a big fan of giving every student what they deserve, and I, and I struggle with the smaller schools. I have smaller schools in my area. I tried very hard when we looked at the small schools, um, several years ago at closing. I, I had two that were under 500, Princeton and Lake Silver. I worked with staff to see if there was any way we could merge the two of those because they were both coming up for construction. Unfortunately, their numbers, um, went over. We, we only billed for 830 elementary students. That's our prototype size. And those numbers, when you put them together, were more than that. So, it was not something that worked in my community. Um, I do still have Hungerford, which is a tiny little school and, um, has less than 300 students. So, I, I feel you're, you're paying for not wanting to close your school, but I also see what you don't have, that you don't realize you don't have because you can't afford it. Smaller schools are much harder to afford all the, the things that all of our students deserve. So, it breaks my heart to do this, but I'm, I'm going to tonight support the staff's recommendation to close Richmond Heights because I believe the students in Richmond Heights deserve what every other student deserves.
All right. Thank you, Mrs. Robinson.
Okay, this is Lawrence Robinson again. Uh, Mrs. Cadel is next. Mrs. Cadel signed the settlement agreement as an Orange County School Board member. She read the agreement and she understood it. She knew that on page six of that document, it said that the school board could not close Richmond Heights Elementary unless the school board believed that there was a dramatic revenue shortfall. She knew that on page seven of that document, that the school board could not close Richmond Heights Elementary just because of a desire to save capital. She knew this. She voted to close the school, but listen to her reasons for closing the school.
Ms. Cadel.
I've listened to all of the conversation, and it's hard when you know somebody is gonna be so far out and the children are not gonna have the technology that the new schools are gonna have. They're not gonna have access to a lot of the things that a new skill, school building brings. Um, it wasn't too long ago that we asked the superintendent's staff to, um, go to some of the new schools and ask what has happened when the new school has been built. Anecdotally, I believed that behavior was better, student achievement was better, faculty was excited because they had a new facility they were proud of. Parents were excited. Um, and it turned out in the testimonials that we got, everything anecdotally that I thought was going on is actually what was shared, and they weren't people from my school board district who were doing the talking. They were from different areas of the county. Um, if we knew that we could guarantee that we were gonna have the money, then maybe it would be different. But we know we can get two schools. We know we can serve all of the children in those two schools. And at this time, with so much uncertainty and knowing that the dollars are there in the plan, I'm going to be supporting the superintendent's recommendation and Mrs. Gordon's recommendation of getting two great schools in District Five.
Okay, with that, um, Mrs. Gordon, can I ask you to make a motion to support the superintendent's recommendation? I think everybody knows how they're gonna vote at this point.
Yes, thank you. To the board and to my community, I move that we accept the superintendent's recommendation in which to improve the schools within our district instead of having to wait for the years to come to, I love what Ms. Robinson stated and Ms., and Ms. Cadel stated and, um, Ms. Flynn, all of them, and especially Ms. Moore, that you don't see. And, and, and we wanted to bring in the fact that there would be a trip. So, I move that we support the superintendent recommendation to improve the schools within District Five.
Okay, it's been seconded. Let me put this, if I could, on a legal footing, just so we do this right, okay, Mrs. Gordon? The motion has been made to approve what was listed as Agenda Item 16.06, which is to approve the design and construction of Eccleston Elementary School and the cessation or enclosure print of educational services at Richmond Heights Elementary School. Okay, that's how it's been put. So, will you accept that as a motion?
Yes.
And that's actual, okay.
That's the wording.
There is a second to that motion.
Thank you.
It's been seconded by Ms. Cadel. Any debate or discussion on that motion? Seeing none, uh, everybody understand what they're voting for here? Okay. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Nay?
Nay.
So, that, uh, motion adopted by a vote of five to three. Okay.
This is Lawrence Robinson again. So, you heard it. By a vote of five to three, the Orange County School Board decided to close Richmond Heights Elementary. We heard all the board members speak, and so now we understand why they voted to close Richmond Heights Elementary, right? Well, let's see. We know that the settlement agreement didn't allow them to close the school, but that didn't stop the Orange County School Board. So, why did they close the school? Chairman Sablet said it was a tough decision. He thought about it for weeks. Well, he should have read the settlement agreement during that time. Obviously, he didn't. Some members voted to keep it open because it was a small school. Of course, some members voted to close it because it was a small school. Some members voted the way they did because they didn't want Kathleen Gordon upset or mad with them. We know that the lack of money is not an issue because there is a documented $37 million surplus. And of course, Kathleen Gordon said that there is not a busing issue. Joe the Cadel wants to close the school so that the residents can get the warm fuzzies by attending a school miles away. A couple of members want to keep the school open because they like community schools. One board member brought up island zones and thought it might be an issue, but she really didn't know why. One board member thought that a larger schools are better because more students get to play football. Another member thought small schools are better because even though they may not be able to play football, there are other activities. Some of the board members were in favor of closing the school, some wanted to keep it open. They are not consistent. Five board members voted to close Richmond Heights Elementary. None of these people live in the district, none of them. Yet, these are the people that decided to close the school. More than 500 people signed a petition to keep the school open. 500 people who live in the district, yet the five outweigh the 500. Am I missing something here? There is no dominant reason to close Richmond Heights Elementary, none. There is no consistent thread weaving its way through the school board's conversation to close the school, none. But wait a minute. You know, maybe there is. Think about, think about this. How many people said that they did not want to hurt this person's feelings? What person said that she knows the settlement agreement in and out? Who even now will not back off this issue knowing that her constituents want to keep the school open? Who continued to champion this issue by having meeting after meeting? Who did Chairman Sablet say brought this issue to the board? You know who? There is no legal reason or logical reason to close Richmond Heights Elementary School. The only reason the school board chose to close Richmond Heights Elementary School is because school board member Kathleen Gordon wanted it closed, period.